Well, my watch is close enough to 7:30 that I would like to call the regular city commission meeting Tuesday, March 17th. And it looks like a few people out here know it's March 17th, St. Patrick's Day, so we got the green, but welcome to all of you here. The first item is to pledge allegiance. Would you please stand and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is to approve the agenda. I believe there was one addition we needed to make, and we do have a couple of board and commission appointments we can make this evening, I think three, so we put that as the first item. We put that ahead of item one, get it past that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Any further questions, discussions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Next item approval. Minutes of the regular meeting of Tuesday, February 3rd, a special meeting, there's also an interview time, I believe, and the meeting of, three meetings that day, so is there a subject of, since I wasn't here, I can't very well...
No, we just had the one meeting to deal with that, with the vote proposed, and then there was the joint meeting.
A joint, the joint meeting, yeah.
There were no airwaves.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve all three sets of meeting minutes from the special meeting of February 3rd, the regular meeting of February 3rd, and the special meeting of March 3rd, as well, actually, there's a four set, the joint meeting of the Berkeley, Huntington Woods, and Oak Park commissions, and the school board, from March 3rd.
Second.
Any corrections, questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Communications, I believe we had no specific communications this time, okay? And our county commissioner is, there she is, right here, ready, front and center. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I want to talk about the proposed millage reduction that the state of the county, Elkhurst Gadderson, suggested that we should cap, cut our county millage by .1 for the upcoming year, and then another .05 the following year. And I'm all for tax reductions, but in reality, for someone who has a house that's appraised at $200,000, you would get $10 back. And so, there are a group of other commissioners, and I'm one of them, that did a counterproposal saying that we would rather take the same amount of money, which is roughly $7.5 million per year, and over a 10-year period, 75 million, and fix potholes, and distribute this money to the cities, and let them choose how to use it to benefit infrastructure. And we did, there was a collective poll, and 80% of the people that, you know, were polled agreed, you know, it's a nice thing to talk about cutback, but I don't want my $10, I'd rather have potholes fixed. And we had lengthy discussion in our finance committee. It split along party lines. We tried to do an amendment saying, let's watch the may vote on the roads, should we use this for roads. So I just wanted to give people a heads up, that's going on. And there will be a vote taken by the Board of Commissioners tomorrow evening on whether to reduce the millage. And if you have strong opinions, I welcome you to come out to the County Board of Commissioners meeting, it's 7 o'clock PM at the Oakland County complex, it's in the Board of Commissioners building, which is just north of the County Courthouse building. It's kind of a circular-looking building, and we meet in auditorium. Next thing that I want to encourage people to do, I've been participating on this Oakland County Health Assessment. It's called ECHO, Energizing Connections for Healthier Oakland. And this group has been meeting, there's probably about 100 different participants from for-profit hospitals, community benefit organizations, health commissioners, so forth, to look at the whole area of health in Oakland County. Every time they're in, and we are required to have strategic plans, whether you be a hospital, when you're going for federal funding, or whether you're a county. So this is a community, much broader assessment with consultants happening. And I would encourage people to go onto the County Health Department website, www.oakgov.com/health, and take the survey. And I do have some hard copies, I'll leave a couple with joy. We really want to get a reading on what's important to people, so that we can advocate and develop policy. And we're also, this is one step going toward county accreditation, and health accreditation. And there is such a thing, and we hope to move forward and distinguish our county of Oakland from other counties when we're going after other federal funding, grant funding foundations. So I do recommend that people take that...
I mean, we could put that link on our city website, so people just go to Huntington Woods and they can click on it.
That would be terrific, thank you.
And we'll probably put it in the manager minutes, that it's there, probably, so a lot of people...
That would be terrific, I would appreciate that. I also want to let you know that we are voting on new downtown development, TIF, Corridor Improvement Authority, regulations, there are some adaptations. I know that Huntington Woods is looking at our first, and that you've been informed, it's really, some of it is just streamlining like language, some of it on the old DDAs, there's notification, you know, that there will be end dates, and cleaning up some language, and a whole group has been looking at that. And one of the things that I asked, you know, whether communities were informed of these changes before they go forward, and they have been. Okay. And that's it for this evening, any questions for me?
Anybody have any questions? You're getting off easy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, this brings us up to the first opportunity for public participation to talk about, if anyone is here, to talk about something that's not a regular agenda item. Yes, sir?
Good evening, my name is Howard Collins, I live at 13102 Nadine, on the corner of Nadine and Henley. I appear tonight before you to talk about right-of-way parking. As construction season in the city has begun, it's become clear to me that the right-of-way parking ordinance may need to be reviewed. There are very specific requirements of where it can happen and how it should happen, however, the ordinances that currently exist does not have any hardship exemption availability for special circumstances. I had sent correspondence to the city manager, which I hope she shared with you, that explains particular circumstances that I'm quite familiar with. And I suspect there are maybe others in town that have a similar impact, that it may be worth review of this ordinance to address those particular cases.
Okay. If you, anything you want to say about it now, or just, it is communicated, I think it's something we maybe should look at.
Yeah, I would look for direction from the commission if you want to have this on another agenda for future discussion, we absolutely can't do anything tonight, but if it's something that you wanted to take a look at, then we could put it on a future agenda.
What's the commission's pleasure?
Well, I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Collins also, and the right-of-way parking issue has sort of gone away, and where it was, if you will, a year or so ago, in terms of interest, but there are a few houses where it's, there are no, you know, where your house is, it isn't a difficult spot, and so it's a matter of coming up with what's the, what's the limits of what you can do, what type, it requires a little bit of study, it's not just something you say, oh yeah, hardship, because then the people that have six cars, well, I got hardship, so I need a right-of-way parking spot, and things like that. And that's what sort of led to that runaway train we had for a while with them here. But as I told you, when we had an opportunity to talk, and as Amy, or, you know, city manager has indicated, that, you know, we're gonna try to look at this and try to figure out what the, I explained to you, one of the issues is the adverse possession business that a few years ago was of no concern, today it's of concern because of those two Michigan Court of Appeals cases. I mean, we've discussed that here at some length, so, but it is something, because of the situation you voiced, we gotta see how many houses there are like that, and try to come up with the most sensible way to try to, you know, set it up, so you get the proper, you can get, I don't know, the variance is proper, but create an ordinance that lets us do this in a way that doesn't compromise the city's ownership over public property, and yet accommodates the homeowner in the few circumstances where it needs to be done. Reasonable?
Absolutely.
I think that was the, yes, Howard, we'll look at it.
Perfect.
That was sort of it.
Well, I appreciate the commission, Mr. Mayor, considering these topics. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have a question about the agenda.
Yes, sir.
There's been some communication on the next-door website about historic post-designations, and I want to make sure, is that gonna be on the agenda yet or not?
Yes.
It is? Because I don't see it.
Well, it says, item number six, I believe is correct place, Historic District Study Committee. I tried to create a committee to, to help you address the questions you have, yeah.
Good question.
Okay. All right, nothing else, we have tonight a presentation by our teen council, which we're very proud of, and Kelly Johnson is gonna give us an update as to what you're doing.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Janson, I'm a junior at Mercy, and I'm the organizational chairperson on the executive board. Right now, our biggest focus is the youth symposium that we'll be attending this weekend at Central University. The theme is Be Your Own Superhero. The focus is on continuing your education after high school, and how you can advocate for yourself, and how to be the best you you can be. We have about 100 people attending from youth councils all over Michigan, and we're sending five, myself, John Gowie, Bryn Cudney, Chloe Baskin, Bailey Saris. I've been on the host council all year, assisting on planning this symposium, and it's gonna be a great time. We want to thank the Huntington Woods Men's Club for their financial assistance with the attendance of the conference. Also, the teen council has participated in a bottle drive competition against the teen councils from Farmington Hills, Detroit, Canton, and Howell. The money raised from the bottle drive went towards a scholarship on continuing education that will be presented to one senior that is going to continue their education at the symposium. The senior must be an active participant in teen council in their community, and they must be attending the youth symposium. We came in second place and raised about $400 for the scholarship, Howell came in first with 512, but we'll get them next year. Through our fundraising, we are also able to donate and be a silver sponsor at the Michigan Victory Games. This year, the Michigan Victory Games provides athletes with physical disabilities and opportunity to participate in recreational competitive sports. The games are May 14th to May 17th at Michigan State, and I will be volunteering there, like the past couple of years, with the friends, with a couple of friends of mine. We are also still selling our magnets at the rec center at the front desk, they're only $5, and the proceeds go to help continuing our programs. And then, also right now, applications to be a summer LIT and junior counselor are available at the front desk. Sixth grade and up are eligible to apply, and the kid has to come get them, not the parent, because it's part of the process in building strong teens in Huntington Woods. Also, at every teen council meeting we have, the membership shares prides with the group, and we have some really great, smart, and talented teens. High test scores at school, performing in school plays, and athletic abilities are just a few of the prides that are shared. And our next meeting is this Thursday, March 19th, at the rec center, and thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Very good. It sounds like you folks are keeping busy.
Yeah.
That's great, right. Very good. Does anybody have any questions for Kelly? Okay, hearing none, thank you very much. We have a proclamation, we have a couple of proclamations we have to consider, and one of them is to recognize Ellen Colgan Lipton, and I think she is here, I didn't see her at the start, but she is now, for her public service. You know Ellen was our state rep for six years, right? As long as she could. I think we're very, we're very fortunate to have someone of her ability and drive and desire to be of help to this community and all of the, all of the state. I got an awful lot of wherashes here, I'll just sort of skip some through them, because we have given her some recognition at the school board meeting, but she began her public service career in November 2008. She served the 27th district, that's the one we're in. She was re-elected in 2010 and 12, and she has been very, very active in her commitment to education and to cities. I think she's done a great job doing that. She served on the education committee, the judiciary and insurance committees, and was widely recognized and respected for her legislative diplomacy. Sometimes that, I really wonder about that combination, but that's not easy to get, so very good. Ability to facilitate consensus and accept the open relationships. She's effective in her ability to work with, across the aisle, as they say. Well, it's been proclaimed that today, that Representative Ellen Colgan Lipton be and hereby recognized and honored for outstanding public service career. Be it further proclaimed that the Huntington City Commission, on behalf of all local residents, expresses sincerest appreciation for Representative Ellen Colgan Lipton, her husband Mark, son Cory, and daughter Celia, and extends best wishes for continued process in future endeavors. Proclaimed this 17th day of March 2015, in the green. So, let's set it up, let's see. You know, you could rebut it if you'd like.
I would just like to say thank you so very much, honorable members of council. This has been a tremendous city to be from, and also to have the honor and privilege to represent, because of your hard work and everything that you did. You made my job very, very easy, in very, very trying times, but it really was, from the bottom of my heart, a tremendous honor and privilege to serve all of you, and now to be just, again, a citizen of this tremendous community. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, again. There is another proclamation, just proclaiming the month of April 2015 as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in the city of Huntington Woods. And again, I think we're all aware of the importance of taking care of kids, of seeing that they're not hurt, and their carehouse in Oakland County works to break the cycle of child abuse. So what we are going to proclaim is that the month of April is Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in the city of Huntington Woods. If you were there, probably will have the proclamation up on the wall if someone would like to read it, or maybe on our website, I suspect it'll be there too, right?
Sure.
Yeah, so, okay. Now, a regular item of business, the boards and commission appointments. You know, we have a policy of interviewing and appointing, and everybody that is appointed to a board and commission serves a three-year term with the right of being able to, if they keep their skirts clean, so to speak, and work hard, they can serve a second term. But we have had a little slow process getting enough, and all our positions filled, but we did have three interviews this evening, and I believe, let's see, we have someone that's wanting to serve on the beautification, tree, and art. I've lost my little sheet of paper, my wife says, why do you keep losing sheets of paper?
Why don't they just make a motion to approve them?
Well, yeah, well, yeah, well, there is, there is, go on, here we go.
Elaine Horowitz.
Elaine Horowitz, well, this is, this is a commission appointment, Public Art Beautification and Tree Advisory Board. And then the other one is the Environmental Advisory Board, so would someone care to nominate those?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we appoint Elaine Horowitz to the bar board, and that for the environmental, Saul McElhanus.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried, thank you. And the other one is the Library Advisory Board, and that's my appointment, and I would like to appoint Mr. Robert Hawley, a very well-qualified gentleman, he's been in the library business all his life, so he will be good, very good for us.
All three candidates, actually.
Yeah, all three candidates are very good, so, that would be, subject to commission approval.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept your nomination to the Library Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is taken care of, thank you. Now, the next item is ordinance number 573, consider an amendment to dealing with the odd-year election, which all of our elections in the city related our odd year, as opposed to the state and federal, which are on even years. Would you sort of explain it for us a little bit, what we're trying to do here?
There was a change in the Michigan election law, and as a result of that, it designated an earlier deadline to file nominating petitions, and we were basically okay with that deadline, but the code had to be amended to deal with the particular situation if, for example, the mayor were to resign prior to his term expiring, and an incumbent decided to run for that position, we needed to tack the additional time period on, so that anyone then wanting to run for that incumbent's position could file timely. So that's what the change is about.
So it's basically adds three weeks.
It adds three weeks.
Three weeks to the state mandated time.
Correct.
Okay. Did someone care to move the adoption of that change?
So moved.
So what it boils down to, that normally, anybody wanting to run for office has to have to register 15, 15 weeks in advance, however, if an incumbent commissioner, for example, wanted to run, let's say, I'm not running, they want to run, they would have to be registered 18, 18 weeks in advance. That's so, as our attorney explained, that gives a chance for someone else to sign up and get on the ballot for, replace that person's opinion. Basically, when they sign up and it's approved, they have resigned their position, so.
Not effective until the Monday after the election.
Effective the Monday after the election, yeah, but that's right, okay. There was a question?
Yes. On the agenda, when there are items brought up, they're brought up by individuals, is it a matter of public record as to who brought up an item? Or are these, are there names?
Well, if you want to come up and speak, you are asked to come, you're asked to come to the microphone and state your name and address, yes.
Oh, okay.
So it's recorded.
So when we get to number six, we'll see who put that up.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Did we vote?
No, haven't voted. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried, thank you. The next item is changing ordinance number 574, it's the definition of setback from your house. You know, most of the, most of the houses in the city of Huntington Woods have a 25-foot setback from the front of the house to the property line. With used to, our old ordinance said to the street, which is sort of an indefinite line. But the property line is like one foot inside the, basically where the sidewalk is, so all we're clarifying.
And we clarified the way the sentence was written, too, because it was sort of flipped around.
So this is just a housekeeping matter to the zoning ordinance to redefine the definition for setback, that it begins or ends not at the street line, but at the property line, because they are not one and the same.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the changes set forth.
Second.
Any discussion?
Does this affect houses that are now, that would be outside of, would they be grandfathered in, that already have, we're looking at porches and steps?
Well, porches are excluded from the...
Porches are excluded, houses that don't meet the...
Excluding steps and unenclosed flat marks, which is a porch, yes.
It really doesn't change anything, we've always used the property line as the setback line, we're just making sure that the definition meets what we've been doing in practice.
Okay. Because if we were using the street, then houses that, when we widen the street, when we redo a street, we take off actually a foot to a foot and a half off of some people's, so their now street line is one to one and a half to two feet, so it would affect some people differently than other people, and I just wanted to make sure that...
Yeah, it's the front line of the building, distance between the front line of the building and the property line, yeah, that's right. And so the street, as the street is wider, then it's closer, the street, but it doesn't change the setback. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried, thank you. Okay, the next item is continuing a discussion which started some time ago about the current sidewalk snow cleaning ordinance. You know, in the city of Huntington Woods, we don't have a contract with you to say that we're going to clean your driveway, we have a covenant with you that says, we're going to do our best to clean your sidewalk, your front sidewalk, as quickly as we possibly can. But we try to say, if I think our ordinance reads now, correct me if I'm wrong, or help me.
That's right.
Okay. 12 hours. When any snow is due during the day hours, such snow or ice may be cleared from, within 12 hours after the cessation of the snow. When the fall snow is ceased during the nighttime, it shall be cleared by 6:00 PM of the day following. So, I think, I'm not saying that we got an ordinance change right now that we're discussing, but we're just trying to continue the discussion which started, so, does anybody have any comments? Yes?
I do. I thought about this, and I thought about how it was brought forward at a commission meeting, and why it was brought forward, and looked into some of the things called up, Clara at DPW, and we have had, like we had a flood, we had have a flood of snow this winter. It usually isn't an issue, and we happened to be down one DPW employee, and then we had one sick, so we were down two in a staff when we had a huge snowstorm. Usually, I live at Huntington, and we try to clean the roads closest to the school, to clear the way for the school. I live on Huntington, closest to Woodward, so I know when that gets, the sidewalks get done. Usually, never an issue. This year, however, we had unusual circumstances, just like we had a flood, we had snow. So, but when we're looking at the ordinance, I think it's a good time to bring up the ordinance, because I think that there should be, this is what I think, a 48-hour to clean your sidewalks, and someone was talking about $150, like fine or something, I don't go for that at all. I think maybe a warning, and the reason I say this is because I didn't know as a new neighbor going in, and I'm on the corner of Huntington and York, that my, my tree, it looked like a, was my bush on the corner, that couldn't go over three feet. But it was nice, because I got a warning to tell me about that, I didn't want to impede the traffic. So it was nice in one aspect, that I got to talk to the police officer, and we had a good communication, and then I talked with the city manager, and we understood, and we had good communication. I think that if we do an ordinance like that, we should give ample warning, because some people don't understand or don't know about ordinances. So I'm all for a warning and then a small fee, but what I don't... So I'm all for a warning and then a small fee, but what I don't want are people to go out, that, and with this communication of the warning, we can now identify people who maybe can't clean their sidewalks. And as Huntington Woods, the city that we are, we can maybe get Boy Scouts or people to do that as a volunteer project. If we don't know that, I would hate to leave a hundred and fifty-dollar ticket on someone. I think that's just not, and twelve hours, that isn't even realistic for people who work and want to do their own thing, so, you know, two-income, full-time people. So I like the idea a little bit, and please chime in on what, but I was thinking something like forty-eight hours, and if there is a warning, then that person can identify, maybe call DPW, and a conversation exists, and we can find out that, in one case, I know that in talking to someone, they had surgery, so they couldn't get out and do their sidewalks. There are all extenuating circumstances in some issues, and I want to make sure that we don't change an ordinance or what we're doing, we take time into thinking about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, there are seniors in this city. I happen to be one of them. I don't intend to drop dead shoveling snow. So one of the things I did was I set up a contract with service, so that I would continually have support service, and actually, I was out of town for three weeks. I came back to my house about forty-eight hours later, and my service was just getting there and cleaning off everything. Now, the average person, if they'd seen it, probably would have been swearing at the person. I was thankful I had access to my house, and I said, "Thank you." But even if you go out and get contracts, when you have an unusual snowfall, when you have an unusual flood, we can say, "Plan and get all the trucks you want," but everybody around here is doing the same thing. I am in a small house. The contractor, no matter whom I hire, usually comes to my house near the end. What are we going to do? Am I going to say to the contractor, "Here, you pay the fine because you were late"? Well, the end result is, the contractor says to you, you know, "You're not worth it, so I'll pay this ticket this time, but I'm not coming back." You figure out a solution for those people who cannot do their own walks, not that's random. If you have twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, and you're going to get Boy Scouts, and they're not going to be able to do it either, if you're going to do an ordinance and modify it, then the more inches you have, the greater time you give for clearance. One of the other problems that we had at the time those walks needed to be cleared is we also needed the people that worked the equipment to be in Lansing to pass a certification test, where there was no option about delay it to the next day. Those instances will happen. If they happen on a regular basis, weekly or daily, and we have normal snowfall, then I think we should deal with the issue. But right now, let's recognize, that was not a normal snowfall. No matter how bad you think it was in this city, drive across Coolidge, and they were behind us, and that's all I, you know, I can say. I don't think, if we micromanage everything and have a solution for everything, we're going to have a problem.
The only thing to that is that the ordinance that stands right now is twelve hours, so I think that we need to somehow.
Are you suggesting that we should make a change in the?
Well, I think twelve hours is sort of unrealistic.
Well, the good news is, hopefully, today's March seventeenth, so hopefully, hopefully, we're done with this stuff.
You didn't just say that.
You're spoken like a true optimist.
And it doesn't matter, because you have to draft the ordinance, you have to post the ordinance, whatever the changes are. The only thing is, is that the time can be extended, the fine can be lessened, and people need to understand, I agree, that people need to understand that is their obligation to do, not everybody understands that, and that's fine, as long as there's fair notice. But you can't structure an ordinance that contains warnings, I mean, because warning becomes very, it's not uneven, but there's no way, either you have a clear ordinance that tells people, "We ask that you do this, and if you don't do this within this time, this is the fine." If the officer, whoever it is, wants to give them a warning, that's fine, but I don't think you can build that into the ordinance.
It has been built into some of our previous ordinances.
I don't think you can build that into the ordinance. So, but anyway, it doesn't matter, because we don't have an ordinance to debate right now. But before we ever have to deal with this in a significant way again.
We've got the summer to, maybe we can think about it more calmly when there's no snow out there.
With a little luck.
Okay. Yes, we got two people. First.
Steve Bearman, 26066. Henry might recognize me. Jules, don't get worried. First of all, I want to indicate, Commissioner Jenks, that I have two parents that live here, one of which is eighty-eight and one of which is eighty-five, and they did a wonderful job at themselves, but they took the responsibility to make sure that their walk was cleaned, and it was, every time it snowed. Second of all, I'm looking at a communication that I wrote to Claire a year ago. We had the same problem then, and the brushes didn't work on the machinery, it was another problem. So this isn't really an isolated year, but this goes on, and it's not an isolated snow, because even when we had subsequent snows that were two or three or four inches after the eighteen-inch snow. Excuse me, I got to sit down, I got a bad back. After we had the eighteen-inch snow, there were subsequent snows, much smaller, and the same offending households still didn't clean their walks. So what I'd like to do is, I like to read a very short letter that I wrote to Claire. It went through the public email, so I don't think it's infringing upon anybody's confidentiality to read it to her. Because Claire made a comment to me that I, when I saw her at a community event after the snow, and this was a letter that I had a response to it. I said, "I was thinking about the comment you made to me the other night, that the residents, if asked to vote, would be in favor of continuing the practice of having the city continue to be responsible for sidewalk snow removal." And I said, "I think that's really a moot point, a red herring argument. The salient fact and reality here is that the city can no longer have the ability to perform the task. Yes, if it's a light snow and the workers are not diverted to other snow removal tasks, they can limp along and get it done in two or three days, which is still really unacceptable for a light snow. But if there's a heavy snow, this is not the reality of the situation. A heavy snow is the city's Bermuda Triangle." I'm acknowledging that. Priorities are diverted elsewhere, the sidewalks are truly impassable, and unsafe for pedestrians, and the homeowners are even more inclined not to clear their own walks. Bottom line, the city can't handle it anymore. I believe that the city needs to ground reality and come up with a plan to keep the walks cleared within a reasonably short period of time, and a plan that involves citizen responsibility, the kind of basic responsibility that comes with owning and maintaining a home. As far as I'm concerned, the city has not shown that it can handle the task in a realistic manner. Keep in mind, it took four to five days from the last major snowfall to just start the task. The fire hydrants, the city-owned property, the street corner sidewalks, longer in some cases, the aforementioned areas need to be the priority areas that realistically are the responsibility of cities. I couldn't even walk around the city-owned parks. The city does not even take the responsibility to attend to their own property, so I don't think we can count on them for hours. And then I indicate to her that I'm always available to discuss and help formulate a plan. I'm not just a complainer, but will be happy to volunteer my time and so on to work through this problem. I appreciate Amy, that you put this on the agenda, and I liked your comments on the, in the packet, and I see that you, in your mind, realize that there is a problem of some sort here, because I don't think you would bring this to a council or a commission meeting if there wasn't. I might indicate parenthetically that if we have a hybrid system that says, "Well, the city will do it, but if we don't get there in a certain amount of time, it's going to be a failure," because those people that do have their walks and driveways cleared by a service, they may have come and gone by that time, and if the city doesn't get around, where are they? So that's not going to work. I also might indicate parenthetically that most walks, over fifty percent of them, I have a dog, I walk the city, most of the walks are already cleared by the residents before the city ever comes around. So when the city comes around to clear the walks, you can ask your guys to do this. I bet you they would tell you probably about between two-thirds and maybe seventy, eighty percent of the walks are cleared. In some areas, it could be eighty or ninety percent. So the city is wasting their time and resources brushing sidewalks that have already been cleared. And I also want to indicate that most of the offenders are repeat offenders. These are people that have told their services, "Don't clear my sidewalk, the city's going to come and do it," because all their driveways, I noticed, are cleared, their sidewalks aren't cleared. So these are people that have resources to have this done, but they don't do it because they think that the city's going to do it. So this hybrid system, if we don't get to it, then it's your responsibility, it's going to lead to a lot of finger pointing and a lot of confusion. Either it's the homeowner's responsibility, or it's the city's responsibility, and if the city decides that they're going to take it upon them, I'm sorry, Commissioner Jenks, it's too bad, they're going to have to do it regardless of how deep the snow is, because if they say they're going to do it, then they're going to have to do it. And that's my thoughts, because you cannot leave pedestrians trudging through a foot or six inches of snow, even four or five inches of snow. And that's my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Bearman. Anyone else? Yes.
My name's Janice Ertzstein. I live at eighty-five seventy-two Huntington, and the first thing I'd like to say is how profoundly grateful we are for the services that the city provides. We see those other communities with their streets unplowed, and those that even have sidewalks, the sidewalks are a mess. The biggest complaint we've ever had about the city plowing has been that as soon as we've shoveled our driveway, guess what? They come by, and we're out there again. But I couldn't be further apart from Steve in the way that I feel about the sidewalk ordinance. We have people up and down our block who simply don't have the physical ability, and in some cases, don't have the means to hire other things. This young guy right there, he goes out with a snow blower still, he's seventy-six. We clean as best we can. Sometimes we're out of town.
He told me he bought the snow blower for you.
He did. That's true, but it was because I wouldn't let him shovel anymore. But, you know, I think that the city has done a remarkable job, and that its policy of restraint when it comes to things like issuing tickets is admirable, especially since, as I am told, the sidewalks are getting plowed in a random, or not quite random, order. Rotating. Sometime, rotating order, that sometimes the little brushes start at Coolidge, and sometimes they start at Woodward, and sometimes they radiate out from Scotia. Whatever it is, it's fair, and so those, all of us who live in the city don't know exactly when to expect, or if to expect, that city plow to go through. Just so happens that the plow went through roughly fifteen minutes after George had snowblowed the sidewalk again. But I think that it's a problem that does not need fixing. The one exception I would say is, our sidewalks are not even. In the winter, even those that have been shoveled have icy patches in low spots. They are not even, at best, entirely safe for pedestrians, and we see pedestrians walking their dogs, sometimes their children, and certainly their, with their running gear on, running in the streets, no matter the condition of the sidewalks. If the city is planning to issue tickets to people who don't have their sidewalks down to the concrete, I say, "Let's issue tickets to those people who choose to walk their dogs in the street." Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We'll be considering this and saying what we're going to do, but not tonight. Okay, thank you very much. The next item is authorizing the, how we're going to spend the tri-party road program money of fifty-six hundred and seventy dollars, fifty-six hundred and seventy dollars that we get from the county annually. Very limited to where we can spend the money, but it's basically to, we have, over the years, saved up money, so when a big project comes along, we can get some funding to do it. So the objective tonight is to allocate, or to allocate the money, so, anyone care to move?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to save the money once again and allocate the five-thousand six hundred and seventy dollars to be placed in escrow for road improvement projects along Ten Mile Road.
Pardon. Any other comments, questions here? Hearing done. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is a matter of considering a resolution to support the proposal one for safer roads in the May fifth to fifteenth ballot. As you know, that's coming up very soon, to get additional funds for roads and for schools and for communities. Money's going to go three places, not just one place. So what's the pleasure of commission? In support of it or not?
I'd like to move the resolution that's before us.
Second.
Any further question or comments? Well, it's the, one of the things that people say, "Well, it's not for the roads." The cities are going to get some, you know, that's as if that's a giveaway. The state has taken away. How many, what percentage of our revenue sharing in the last ten years? How much have they taken away?
Oh, well, lately it's been increasing, but it certainly went down at least twenty percent in the last fifteen years.
What does that translate to in dollars?
In terms, oh.
Loss?
Probably two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars at least.
That's a significant amount of money, any impact on us. That means, that money for running the city, part of it comes directly out of your pocket, so, and you've paid money in taxes, et cetera, but you're not getting it back, and this is a way to fix part of that problem. That's what we hope, anyway, so. So no other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Ah, I think here's the one that has got some people interested. Historic District Study Committee, a matter of continued discussion on the creation of a Historic District Study Committee, to see if we need to increase the amount of historic districts we have in the city. I think that's fundamentally the quickest way to put it. What's the thought on the table here? We have, currently, we have two historic districts. The one in the zoo, the Rackham Golf Course is one, and the other one is up in the corner up in the here, and there's.
How many years is historic?
Come up to the microphone.
Come up to the microphone. Discussing the study committee.
If you have a question, you got to come up to the mic.
It's hard for me to walk up there.
Well.
How many years is considered historic?
You got to give your.
For a car, we know.
Name and address.
For a house.
What is the number? I don't know. Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Well, Mayor, can I help you?
Well, Mayor, can I help you out a little bit? Because I was here at the meeting when we were discussing it, so maybe I'll update you a little bit, which, you know. So, at the one meeting we had for, it was on the agenda, and we had a good dialogue with our residents and the commissioners decided to table this to this meeting. And, sir, I think you were asking, "How did this get to this agenda?" That's how it got to this agenda and this time. And the idea, I think, that some of the commissioners had, and please tell me if I'm misspoken, is that they were going, we were going to get some public input in that. But at the time, I said, "I don't think we can do much unless we, if we wanna study it and give you good empiric data, we've gotta be able to study the topic and give you the pros, the cons, and then have a visioning, have an historic district discussion with residents to come and talk about it." That way, we can make an educated decision as a community and not through a next-door neighbor with some inaccurate data that was in there. I'm sorry, that we cannot govern the city by data that is incredible. We need to be able to give you information that is factual information. Answer your questions, answer your concerns. And if, after we discuss this, we think it's not a good idea or we shouldn't do it, then we shouldn't do it. You know, or maybe from these discussions, we decide, "Well, maybe this is so important, we gotta put it before the vote of the people." Maybe that's what we decide, but we can't decide by six, seven, eight people coming on and browbeating to make a decision of how to run the city through what happens in next-door neighbor. It just can't work that way. And that's me being honest with what has changed in this. And I wanna, I'm here to make good decisions for you. You elected me, you know, we don't have a paycheck here. We do what we think is in the best interest of our citizens. We don't always get it right, but we know when we make a mistake, we've gotta make it better. But in order to make a good decision on this, we have to study this. And that's what I'm trying to tell people, that if you're making a decision, make it on good evidence. So, I think that's why I think that we could have.
I agree with what Commissioner White said. The other thing that I wanted to see at the last meeting was I thought that the proposed district to study was too large and that there were blocks that they were asking to do a study on that didn't have enough percentage concentration of potential homes. So, one of the things that I asked administration to do was to narrow that list down so that the possible studies, possible areas that we would study had a bigger percentage of possible historic value. And then, it was my understanding, and I still hope that we do this, that once we have a smaller area, we invite every home in that area to a town hall meeting, if you wanna call it that. Administration hosts with whatever help they would like to explain the historic district, to explain the process, to explain what's going on, and then get comments from the public that would be directly involved. Of course, anyone can come, but I would wanna make sure that everyone in the proposed area is definitely invited. And then, based on that conversation, we can make a decision as to whether we go forward with a study or not.
Yeah, the details of how you do it, that's what the study commission is doing. Commissioner Jackson?
Yeah, I don't think you got an answer to your question.
No, I didn't.
Let me just explain, and this comes from the state historic preservation office, which is what we must follow. This is not a random choice where people pick standards out of a hat and then apply them. Citizens ask local legislative body to adopt a resolution to approve a historic district study. Two, the local legislative body appoints a historic district study committee. Three, the study committee performs photographic inventory and research. Four, the study committee evaluates the resources using the National Register of Historic Places criteria. I'm not a specialist in that. That committee, once it is formed, must follow those guidelines. Hank Berry basically was involved in leading two past historic district studies. That study committee prepares a preliminary historic district study committee report following basically the historic district guidelines. The study committee officially transmits the report to local planning board, the state historic preservation office, the Michigan Historical Commission, and the state review board. In that sixth step, at least sixty days after the official transmittal of the report, the study committee holds a public hearing. Following that, the study committee has up to one year after the public hearing to submit a final report to the local legislative body, which is us. That local legislative body, roughly a year from now, would itself vote at that time to approve or reject the proposed historic district. The historic district ordinance must be adopted and a historic district commission appointed at the time of the historic district's approval. Then, property owners apply to the commission for a certificate of appropriateness before undertaking work in the historic district. There are standards set up federally. The study committee, before it puts any house as an asset, must be able to explain, according to the federal standards, that this house fits it. It explains what they see. And based upon that, it still can be rejected in Lansing as not meeting the criteria. But it goes through a whole pre-process. The identification that's been now has been an identification by staff without research. There could be a lot more, there could be zero of those properties that federally qualify.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
My name is Dennis Case. I live at two-five-eight-seven-five Salem. I have a couple of comments. I think the issue before the commission is whether or not the residents of Huntington Woods even want to begin the process of designating more houses as historic. That's the issue. I unfortunately was not here at the February meeting, but the issue really is whether or not we want to even have more designated. The motion at the February meeting was tabled. The discussion previous to the vote to table was, as it was said, the question of whether or not to narrow, among other things, to narrow the listing of the houses. There was no meeting of the historic commission after that meeting in which it would have had to have been a public meeting under the act. There was no meeting of the commission. So, as far as I can tell, this whole thing is actually coming from staff, not from the residents and whether or not they really wish there to be further houses designated. As a sidelight, I just wanna say that I'm on the, my house is on the list. You know, the map has a blue house on the new proposed district, but so is the empty lot next to me, which I own. So, it's a, you know, would be designated as historic. So, as far as I can tell, there is not, among other things, first, there's been no discussion of whether the residents really wanna undergo this process in the first place.
That's what we're trying to find out we should do, yes.
That, and I agree. Before we have an appointment of a committee, why don't we have a full and open discussion by the residents of whether we're in favor of going through this process to begin with? Then, if it turns out that the residents truly favor having more houses in a historic district, then you can bring before you a motion to appoint a committee to explore that issue. But appointing that committee starts, as my sister, who read a speech that I personally prepared last time, said, "You're appointing that committee starts a train out of the station which starts moving forward and will never be stopped." I think the time to stop it is now when we have a discussion of whether or not we really need even to begin exploring the issue. Thanks.
How do you have that discussion?
Now, if you're gonna say the same thing, you don't need to.
How do you, excuse me, Ms. Case, excuse me. I have a question for you. So, you wanna have this discussion. So, tell me how you have a discussion with people if everybody is not fully informed on the issues that we're discussing? For example, let me ask you a question. Do you think your property value is higher or lower if it's designated historic?
I have no question that it's gonna be lower.
Really?
Yes. No question.
Let me ask you a question. Do you have any study?
I have no studies.
Okay, Ms. Case, let me finish my question. Are you aware of any studies out there that show that historic districts, when they're put into place, whether or not they generally speaking cause property values to rise or go down?
Okay, two things.
Do you know the answer to my question?
Mr. Welton, who was a real estate agent, has just.
Can you answer my question?
I'm trying to.
I'm waiting for you to.
I'm trying to. The answer is.
Don't cross-examine him like that.
I've been told, I've been told by reputable.
I'll say that for you, Mr. Worrey.
I've been told by a reputable real estate agent that in fact his study of the values of houses in Huntington Woods that are in and out of the historic district, that the ones in the historic district have risen at a slower percentage rate than the ones not in. But that isn't the question. Whether my house is gonna go up in value or not isn't the issue. The issue is whether or not the residents of Huntington Woods want to be bound by the restrictions that will cause houses either to go up in value or not to go down in value. If you promised me that it would help my house go up in value by five percent, I wouldn't care. The issue is whether or not, when I need to replace my front door, which I have done since, you know, we bought the house, or whether I wanna add on a room in the back or whatever, is whether I have to jump through hoops that are unnecessary, whether they cause my house to go up in value or not. That hasn't been relevant to me. And I don't think that if it goes up another one percent or two percent, I'm gonna care. Maybe my grandchildren will care, but I'm not gonna care. I plan on being carried out. But in the meantime, the issue is whether or not we want all the additional houses in Huntington Woods that are now proposed and then are proposed the next time, whether we want them to be covered by this ordinance.
Well, I think that, as Commissioner Paul said, one of the questions was the last time. You know, one of the questions that's been posed to me by numerous residents over the years is, "Why can't you stop teardowns?" And I said, "Well, how do you stop a teardown of a property? If somebody buys a house, it's their house, and there's no restriction, there's no historic designation, there's nothing that stops them from tearing it down, how do you stop them from tearing it down?" Well, there are some people who feel that teardowns are bad. There are people who feel very strongly that, about the house on Pembroke, which is what led to all of this. And they feel very strongly about it. They felt that house was, you know, that it was a shame to see that happen, whatever, whatever the good intentions of the parties were, that that was a shame to see that happen. And so, you know, we're back to the same question I asked before. And since the last meeting, I've, there are a number of studies out there. You know, frankly, most of them are positive towards the benefits that the historic district designation has versus whatever you say are the hoops and things like that. But the point is, in a city like Huntington Woods, and I agree with you, that you have to have a dialogue, but the dialogue has to be meaningful. It can't just be, "Well, I don't like it." Okay, fine. Why don't you like it? "I don't like it." Okay, great. The other guy stands up and says, "I like it." At the last meeting, we had people who spoke very eloquently on both sides on that issue. And both, and made very good points both ways. So, I don't see how a study committee, which gives information to people, and a study committee that solicits the opinions of the residents, a study committee made up of residents, is a bad thing. I just don't see how that is a, I don't see how, whatever side of the argument you're on, that that's a bad thing.
I will answer the question two ways. First, I believe that besides the fact that most of the people here, it sounds like most of the people here are opposed to adding more houses to the historic district. Whether I, because I can't see behind me, I couldn't tell who was booing and who was clapping. But forgetting that for the moment, I think that the first thing that you ought to do is you ought to schedule a town hall meeting at which all of the residents of Huntington Woods, not just the ones who are in the historic district that propose new, but all of them are invited. But more importantly, you create this historic district, covers five, six, seven blocks. There are gonna be teardowns all over Huntington Woods that have nothing to do with that. If you're creating this historic district to stop teardowns, you've gotta do it a better way. This isn't the way to do it. This is the way to take certain houses and say to them, "You can't do anything, and all the other houses, you can do anything you want." That's.
Who says you can't do anything?
That's misinformation.
That isn't what the historic district does.
The historic district says, "If you wanna change anything on the outside of your house, you need permission from the commission."
But you have.
But every house, it's not an answer.
Anybody that does anything to their house.
No.
Anybody who does anything to their house has to come to the planning commission to get approval. Any house in the city, okay?
If they need a building permit, if they wanna change the windows, they don't have to come to the building, to the planning commission. There's nothing in your statute saying you can't change your windows, you can't paint your house, you can't do all sorts of things without coming to the planning commission. But now you wanna tell certain people? Now you wanna tell certain people?
Okay, I think, yeah, we've heard, you've had your turn.
Okay.
Okay, George?
Good evening. I'm George Erdstein. I live at eight-five-seven-two Huntington Road. I've had the honor of being a member of and chairing the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals many years ago. Since that time, I have found that the planning ordinance has become so restrictive. In fact, probably the most restrictive ordinance in Oakland County as far as what people can do with their homes. It seems ludicrous to me that a historic district would be created to go even beyond the restrictions that are already in place. To create it just for the prevention of a teardown, it seems like the tail is wagging the dog here. The instances of that are so few. The ones that I've seen in Huntington Woods have only been for the better. People find a reason to do things. In general, people wanna benefit themselves. They wanna improve their homes. In an historic district, you've got leaded glass windows, let's say, lovely, but they're not efficient. Your heating bills are going out, you can't change them. As far as values, I don't have facts, but I would think that if people can't buy a home with the freedom to improve their homes, they're not gonna buy that home, and values will go down.
Will somebody else?
I don't think so.
But you keep, that's why I'm, George, we've known each other a long time. I'm just asking for, besides, I think, and your concession that you don't have any, that's what I'm asking. That's, it seems to me that's the whole purpose of having a study.
The whole reason for the even, I will.
I sit with you, you were very restrictive on that.
With the ordinance we have.
You were very restrictive.
It's still in place. If people are worried about things running amok, or we have no control over the city, we have controls. In fact, I think too much control at the moment, but it's in place. The idea that the historic commission. The idea that the historic commission or district will save homes, it seems like such a miniscule reason to do this. The, not only is the tail wagging the dog, you're cutting your nose to spite your face. I can go on with all kinds of other similes.
That's okay, you don't need to.
I don't have to, but please consider the reason why you're considering this in the first place. Why, what is the reason? We have a lovely city, we have an ordinance. Give people a little credit for what they can do with their homes.
What about the developers?
What about?
What about them? What about somebody that comes in and sees a house and says, "Great, I want that, I'm gonna tear it down, and I'm gonna build another house right there." And they don't live in Huntington Woods. This is the discussion we had the last time. The people who are doing it as an entrepreneurial effort, and I'm not saying they're of bad intention, but they're not gonna live in the city. They want to sell the house, they want to flip the house and sell it to somebody, you know.
You're looking at the worst case scenario.
No, but you keep saying, "Give us credit, this, that, and the other," and we're back to the same thing. Who's "us"? The resident who has the house, or a builder who's coming in who wants to build a house or flip a house?
Anyone who wants to improve his or her property.
Ah, improve.
That's what everybody wants. If you're a developer, you want to make a buck. You want to improve the property.
Really, and they always want to make, they always, you think those are connected?
Yeah, I mean, you're getting into...
Yeah, we're getting pretty, we're running long here and repeating ourselves. We keep repeating ourselves.
So, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, George.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, could you have asked that one conversation take place?
Yeah, that was one of the, that was gonna be my next statement. When someone is speaking, give them some credit, you know. Be quiet so everybody else can hear. Okay, who else wishes to speak? Okay.
I'm not going to repeat the things that other people have said. But the most profound, even though it's not exactly, is the horse and the tail and the... There are many things we could study. And they might be wonderful if we got it in our heads to study them. Somehow, people have gotten it into their heads, and it seems primarily the commission, though I'm not sure, I certainly haven't done research on that. But the one point I want to make is that it's not about having the people included who will be in the historic district. It's about a community of friends and neighbors and homeowners operating under different constraints. And all the people I talked to are very unhappy about it. They don't want to study historic districts. They want to, I don't know, play baseball. They don't, they, they would like to use city resources to do other things. But if there's, and at the last time we talked about this, both Commissioner Paul and Commissioner Olesman talked about how they wanted, after the motion to table was made and the discussion went on, both of you gentlemen talked about how, before it came up again, you wanted to solicit information. To my knowledge, there has been no solicitation of resident input. If I missed it, it certainly wasn't because I wasn't looking. There has been no solicitation of anybody I know on my street, on my block.
But how do you know there hasn't been solici, I don't understand your comment. How do you know who we've talked to? How do you know what the discussions have been? You mean in a public forum?
If you're going to solicit information from residents, then you do it by one of the means that we have to communicate. Amy can tell you, we have a lot of means to communicate. And I'm pretty sure that if you were soliciting input from people, I'd be aware of it, and everybody in the room would be aware of it. Have we had any elements of solicitation?
What's that?
It's inappropriate.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You've made your point, we understand what it is. Let's get on with it.
But my point is all of the people in Huntington Woods, not just those in historic districts.
I think that's what I said.
Commissioner White, have a comment.
You know, I ran the last meeting, and I just want to make an observation. When people who were prohistoric district came up and spoke, sitting from where I was sitting with the mayor, I was extremely disappointed that what people were laughing at some of the stories and some of the negative comments that came when Martha gave a very passionate speech about what she felt. I didn't think that we respected each other's opinions from where I sat. But what I say to you, Mr. Ernsting, and I've sat with you on the planning commission also, and I've been here. You want to give, I give the residents credit, but what you have to do is give their commissioners credit. Our city rates one of the top cities. We are one of the most progressive cities, people want to live here. The price of my house when I first bought it was a hundred and four thousand. I got asked to be five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for my house. We're doing good things for you in Huntington Woods. We're not, we're not making your life miserable. And what Commissioner Paul said, if I can correct it, if I can just say, he said, "Bring in everybody." Not just, he said, he added to it. He said, "The people in the historic district and everybody else." We want to get a good dialogue. I think dialogue is important, but we need to respect each other. And respect just as many, as you said, most of the people here don't want the historic district. How do you know that? You know, for every phone call that I've received, and people who don't want the historic district, I've received forty calls of people who want a historic district, who were going to actually picket the house that they were gonna tear down. I asked them not to do that. I said, "Let's go and let's have a dialogue." So I don't understand where this anger is coming from, because we make good decisions. If we don't, when the term comes up, come in, come on the boards and committees, volunteer your time to be part of the planning commission in the historic district. Come, because nobody who is at the main sayers came to any of our meetings to come on and volunteer time. Mrs. Case, you came, thank you. So that's what I'm saying. We're not here to argue back and forth. We want to have a good dialogue, but I really think that we can't talk about it unless we have good empiric evidence of what it does. Just like this gentleman says, "I don't want it whether it's good for the city or bad for the city." Well, or, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to misquote you. So let's, but however it is, let's make sure that we have good data to support it and have a good conversation.
Okay, right here.
I certainly don't think that we're here to hurt your feelings, and I don't think we're angry.
Your name is?
Allison Iverson, two six zero six three Dundee.
You don't have to worry about hurting my feelings.
We are here because of Nextdoor. We are here because I walked around our neighborhood by myself and handed out flyers to all the people that would be affected by this district. If I, one stay-at-home mom of four children, who educates my children at home, can find the time in my day to walk through my neighborhood to let my neighbors know what's going on, I think the city is capable of doing the same. That is what we're concerned about. We don't want these things happening without us knowing about it. We don't want a study committee. There has been a study committee. I'm sure you guys have seen this book. In nineteen sixty, a history committee within the Huntington Woods Study Club received a charge from the president then, Margaret Kruger, to start collecting information for a history of Huntington Woods. In the intervening years, this committee has explored all available avenues in its search for accurate historical materials concerning this community. They looked at homes. They looked at, there are actually a whole list of historical homes in this book. So a study's been done. We are simply telling you that we don't care what you find. We don't want a study. We don't want to be bound by something else. We love our neighborhood, we love our city. Because we oppose it does not mean we're angry and we don't love our neighborhood and we don't love our commissioners or mayor. It means that we are differing in our opinions. We don't want the study. We ask that you take this off the table permanently. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. A gentleman back in the back here has been, had his hand up.
Tom Franco, two six three seven oh Humber, Huntington Woods since nineteen seventy-four. And I have also served on the planning commission at one time. I had black straight hair until I heard about this. We are adjoining the historic district if we point back that a lot behind us is in a historic district. When we moved in, shortly after we moved in, we removed our historic central water-driven air conditioning and our historic oil tank. And I'm glad that we didn't have to ask anybody about that. I think we should be frankly happy that people are willing to redevelop in Huntington Woods. Let's assume that I was in the historic district, and my home is my major investment, as it is for many people. And the best offer I got was from somebody who wanted to knock it down and build a new energy-efficient home with all of the conveniences that would be worth more. Whose business is that but mine and the person who wants to buy it?
What about your neighbors?
Frankly, so long as it conforms with the ordinance, it's none of their business. That's what the ordinance says. If somebody wants to do something in conformity with the ordinance, I don't want somebody saying what the faucets need to look like, okay? And I, like I say, this, I'm not, fortunately, right now, I suppose in another few years, we might be in historic district, and maybe we'd have to consult people about how we replaced our driveway or anything else we did with the house. I don't want to have to ask anybody over and above compliance with the ordinance, okay? If I got a, an offer for that home, all right, from somebody who's gonna tear it down, and I offered the historical commission a right of first refusal to pay the same price for it, what do you think their answer would be? You're on your own, okay? Now, if I was to put my house up for sale, you know, you asked, "Do you have any studies?" And it was in the historic district, I have a hard time seeing how I would list that as a selling point, okay? Because now, when you want to do something to this house you just bought, you not only have to comply with the ordinance, you have to go to a commission to get approval to how you're gonna do it, okay? So I think...
But again, you don't have any data that would support that.
What do you mean, "I don't have data"?
You don't have any data to support that they... You have a very strong opinion, I appreciate that. What I'm looking for is facts, data that says, if it's a historic district that the property is either harder to sell or the property is worth less, something...
I'm not saying that. I don't want my prerogatives interfered with. And what's been given away here, what's been given away here by this very discussion, and this is...
In the back, please be quiet.
This is, this is kind of the twist to this. Ask yourselves honestly, I'm not even gonna answer this question, I'm just gonna ask it, all right? Has this been spiked by concern about what other people are doing lawfully with their properties or by all of a sudden a groundswell of interest in history? I don't think it's the history. I think it's people being concerned about what other people are doing lawfully with their properties. That's what's driving this. The history's always been here, okay? What hasn't been here is the knockdowns, the rebuilds, somebody doing something on Pembroke that some people didn't like. Some people on the block thought it was terrific, they've looked at the plans, they think it's just fine, okay? You know, you want to buy the view, buy the view. If that includes my house, buy it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Banks?
There are two competing and very, very legitimate views about local control. One of them is called Dillon's Rule, they both date from eighteen sixties, eighteen seventy. And Dillon, in a court case in Iowa, basically that was precedent-setting, said a municipal corporation possesses only powers expressly granted or necessarily implied, or essential to the accomplishment of the declared objects. And that's what I'm hearing. Mind your own business, it's my house, as long as I follow planning commission rules or whatever you set out, that's fine. And there's a competing view, which says that there is a broad government authority, it's called home rule. And there's a famous judge named Thomas Cooley, who in eighteen seventy-one said, "Local government is a matter of absolute right, and the state can't take it away." Well, that still wasn't too clear to a lot of people, because they took the first position. And in nineteen sixty-three, we amended the Michigan Constitution in Article Seven, Local Government, Section Thirty-four, and said, "The provisions of this constitution and law concerning counties, township, cities, and villages shall be liberally construed in their favor." What that meant, at least from the discussions, was a new section intended to direct the courts to give a liberal or broad construction to statutes and constitutional provisions concerning all local governments. That's where I come from. I was elected here, I work for everyone in the city, and sometimes that means I'm working for your viewpoint, and sometimes that means I'm working at a viewpoint where you disagree. I am not worried about the teardowns of specific homes. What I am worried about and concerned about is maintaining a character in this city so we do not become another Birmingham or another Bloomfield Hills. Where basically you build your house on a slope, the water pours down, it hits your neighbors, whatever, and everyone says, "Hey, that's your problem, it's not mine." People are asking me about studies on value. Well, I can give you from Grand Rapids, Ypsiloe, Howland, Sawgatuck, Alleghan in our state. I can give you from a half a dozen studies in South Carolina, plus Tucson, Athens, Georgia, Denver, Colorado, Galveston, Texas, Memphis, Tennessee, Mesa, Arizona, New Jersey, New York, Phoenix, Rome, San Diego, Savannah, Texas, Tifton, Georgia. When I hear a complaint from any of you, regardless of how I feel personally, I take it that my responsibility is to you, and I have to check out the facts. So if it relates to economic value, there is proof in Michigan and other places that this isn't some cockamamie idea. If you want to look, there are seventy-four communities in Michigan that have historic districts, or at least have historic district ordinances. Seventy-two of those have historic districts. They're terrible cities like Birmingham and Royal Oak and Northwest Detroit and Indian Village and Palmer Woods, which our city is in many ways copied from and had many of the same architects. It's useful, all this study does, and what we're told to do by the law, not by a bunch of elected city commissioners. Before establishing a historic district, the legislative body of the local unit shall appoint a historic district study committee. The committee shall contain a majority of persons who have a clearly demonstrated interest in or knowledge of historic preservation and shall contain representation from one or more more duly organized local historic preservation organizations. And then there are things that they must do before we can even come to you and say, "Maybe we should have a historic district." The neat thing about this whole process, because I followed the people as they went to a hundred and nine or a hundred and eight homes. And I also went to every single door, because I was running again, and I said, "What do you think about this?" And people said, "Well, I can't cut the bush in the..." And people said, well, I can't cut the bush in the, in the front of, in my front yard. And I said, did George Washington plant that bush? Somebody else said, I can't paint the paint. And I said, yes, you can. There's a lady sitting in this room that moved her house from 2,000 square feet, enlarged her home from 2,000 square feet to 4,000 square feet. But people tell me, oh, I can't enlarge my, my house. One of the things I'm seeing from sitting on planning now and reading the planning minutes, you may think your neighbor is enlarging their house and I'm going to accommodate my neighbor because that person is my neighbor. A lot of people are coming in here, they are buying the houses as cheaply as they can, they are tearing them down, they're building them as cheaply as they can. It wasn't like that before, George, but I mean, our homes are selling at a half a million dollars. In the historic district, there was a home that sold for three-quarters of a million dollars. And the 104 homes where I have a listing that were sold last year, the second highest price, sale price on a home was in the historic district. If you compare, you know, I don't want to, I'm not a researcher there, but there are two philosophies that are running here. One of those philosophies is if we can keep the character of this city, which means many smaller homes, then we will have what has always occurred in this city. My kids are grown, I've got four bedrooms, I don't want to leave Huntington Woods, and so I'm going to move to a smaller city. Why is it that our school is top-ranked? Why is it that we're AA-plus rated? Why is it that we were the 10th-best community to live in by Caldwell Banker? And the eighth, which was the only other Michigan community, was East Grand Rapids? There weren't any other communities like that. I'll tell you something, I was not comfortable when the first historic district was created because I didn't know what it really meant. And we had lined up along the back wall, major attorneys from every single law firm saying it would be a taking. I spent a year and took the citizen planner course because I think I work for you, not for myself. And I walked with people to see what they were doing, and I was amazed by what I started learning about homes. And it would be interesting, even if we get to this stage six that I mentioned before, that if you basically found out a little bit of information about the house you live in, if you live in the historic district, you don't have to vote for it at that point. But at this point, what you're saying is, don't study anything because I'm afraid what you might find. You don't even, and then don't waste city resources. It wasn't city resources, it was, what was Louise, you know, I mean Bob, Robert, what was the resources?
Our time.
It was your neighbor's time, it was individuals' time who live in the city, who were on this committee. It wasn't a bunch of professional staff. What are you afraid of? I mean, all of a sudden, for the last six months, this has been the fascist group sitting up here, or the communist, as one person would call us. What the hell did I do for the other 14 years? Why is it that I was elected at my professional association, the Michigan Municipal League, as president? Why in the same role, and I'm second in charge, at SEMCOG? Why do we get awards and continual recognition in this city? Is it because we're taking your rights away? Now, are you, I sponsored a historic district, and the citizens in the city voted a quarter of a million dollars to provide legal services. What was that historic district? It was a rackham golf course. I was the one that added rackham. Because there are a couple of young kids that were going to take 123 acres, they were going to take about 100 acres that they could develop, you can put four houses on an acre, we would have had at least 400 homes, possibly some that were, you know, really large. And you start thinking about how the library works, how the rec center works, when you add 1,000 to 2,000.
Yes, I think you've made your point. Thank you, thank you. Okay, I'm going to stay, it's been, it's been a long time, I got one more person that says something that hasn't already been said. One more, there's one hand back there.
Hi, everyone, Robert Lebo, 10535 LaSalle Boulevard, celebrating my 34th year in the city. I've been on the historic district study committee, I've been on the historic district commission and chaired that commission, I was on the blight committee, I was on the zoning board of appeals, and most recently the planning commission. I can assure you, the steps a person has to go through to make any alterations on their home throughout the city are far more rigid applying to the planning commission than to the historic district commission. Ms. Iverson spent some time composing a letter and passing it out to her neighbors. It's unfortunate that it has misinformation in it. A small portion of it reads, as a resident of a historic district, you would need to seek permission to make any changes that would affect the appearance of the outside of your home. New windows, front door, that's partially true. Only if you change the materials or the configuration, otherwise...
(laughter)
You're so polite, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Only if you change the materials or the configuration. Light fixtures, fixtures, only if they are character-defining. Sidewalks, only when changing the routing or the materials. Porches, front porches only need to be approved administratively, does not require an HTC appearance. Mailboxes, patently false. Siding, repairs, do not need to go to the HTC, only material changes do. The roof, only when changing materials. Additions, only if they are less than, only if they are greater than 700 square, 700 square feet. Less than 700 square feet, they go before the administrative panel again. Tree removal, only dead or diseased trees need to go for approval, do not need approval, healthy trees do. I have a little bit more. I've asked this question in the past, no one will step forward and answer it. I want to know, in the historic district, who has been damaged by historic districting? No one will respond to this. The entire city of Pleasant Ridge is a historic district. Even east of Woodward, which is affectionately called Peasant Ridge because they are teeny tiny little houses, every one is within a historic district. And Pleasant Ridge values are as high or higher than Huntington Woods. It has not been a detriment to anyone in that city at all. Everybody. Detroit has 17 historic districts. Doesn't seem to have been hurting the city lately. Detroit prices are skyrocketing. Now, one gentleman has posted on Nextdoor Huntington Woods, and it is a public forum, so feel free to use Mr. Abraham Benziew's name, who says that we are a Gestapo. His language, I expect that shortly after, and he refers to painting his porch in blue and orange stripes, which would be allowed in the HTC because it does not regulate color, that the Gestapo, the Huntington Woods Gestapo, will visit him. How utterly offensive is that? To suggest that this is a Nazi-based community? Anyone who suffered at the hands of a theodoric would be appalled at this, and I am ashamed for him for using this type of language. And further, he says, that there are some hysterical people who become all excited about historical importance. And he suggests, for those people, I submit that therapy will be more beneficial than pockets of historical value. How utterly disrespectful to the city. It's shameful. And probably Huntington Woods' most infamous realtor, Mr. Bob Waltman, who on his own website clearly has a link to the National Historic Trust, and throughout his website promotes historic preservation, even links to help save our national treasures and preservation tips and tools, as opposed to historic districting. Now, I did a rather good internet search over the past couple of weeks of past Huntington Woods real estate listings. For the past two years, I found two that mentioned historic district, a house in a historic district. One of them was by a resident real stater, realtor, excuse me. The second was from someone who was outside. But to have our own real estate professionals not promote a jewel of our community is somewhat shameful again. Now, I think the most valuable aspect of historic districting now, since no one can claim any damages from it, is that this is a roadblock to developers. Everyone here has glowingly referred to our beautiful city tonight, and they always have. They love Huntington Woods, that is why they're here. Huntington Woods is rapidly disappearing. We are being invaded by rogue developers who come in as the mayor stated, or as Jeff stated, buy as cheaply as possible, build as cheaply as possible, and sell as high as possible. That is destroying the very fabric of this community. Little houses are being replaced by big houses that really don't belong here, and makes it absolutely unaffordable for those lower-income families or people who simply choose not to spend as much money as it would take to purchase one of these new large houses. Entire blocks are being lost. Take a look at Nadine and Metalcrest now, that corner is just gone. Two new for sale signs went up this week, we're losing two more houses on that corner, it's going to look like a brand-new subdivision. And the houses are pretty shoddy houses. They're houses that you can buy in any local community, Berkeley, Royal Oak, Hazel Park, they're loaded with them. Pick the facade you want, we'll put it up, boom, boom, gone. So, we're losing our city. And we're losing our city at a rapid rate. The National Historic Trust for Preservation states that, once this ball gets rolling, within 10 years, you can lose 25% of your houses, and we're approaching that. In the past 15 years, we have lost 15 houses, oh, excuse me, in 15 years, we've lost 25 houses. With two more slated to come down now, there's 27 houses. It's not a small number, it's big. And it impacts every single one of us.
Okay. Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you. I, this, we could sit here all night, I guess, and hear the same story over and over and over. No, I don't think so, I don't think so. But, speak up, let's hear something new.
My name's Tony Grubino, 10745 LaSalle. I've been here for five years, and candidly, if I wanted to live in a historical district, I probably would have sought a property that was in one. My house is built in 1936, and there's not very much original left to it, so I've got a bunch of bricks from 1936. My neighbor's been there since the 60s, so there might be something historical to that, I'm not sure. But, the other, the other component that I've noticed, you know, just judging by the cadence of the folks on the panel, is that we are in, you know, start, we're in a position where we absolutely want to bring this study on. Now, when you do something like that, and you see the opposition to that, and again, I don't know, I haven't done my diligence, but, and I don't know what the protocol is, but if we're going to do a study for a historic district, what is the protocol to have a study to dissolve the existing historic district and to have it deregulated outside of what was at rackham? Because I understand, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, the rackham development was the impetus for the original historic district, is that right?
No.
I don't know. But that being said, is there any opposition to having a study done concurrently if we do have to have one for a historic district, to have one done to have the current historic district decertified? Because again, you know, judging by the, you know, the meetings that have drawn the most interest, which would be the tree, the tree ordinance and now this, is that if there was an overwhelming amount of support for the positive effects of a historic district, I think these people would be lined out the door to, to talk about that. And I'm not, I don't see a lot of people lined out the door. So, that's, that's my question, is if you'd be, if you'd have any opposition to doing that concurrently, if that's what you're going to push?
It's an interesting thought, I hadn't thought about it. Okay, can we, can we wrap this up here pretty soon, folks?
Paul Goodman, 80/20 Lincoln, I've been a resident of Huntington Woods since 1968. I've seen the community improve. One of the improvements that I've seen is the beautiful new houses that are built, and the community is a nice mix of old and new, which I think is very attractive. This is obviously a hot-button issue, and I think it should be put up to the voters of the city to decide. That's the best, best way to find out what the people really want.
Thank you.
Very briefly, my name is Sharon Sharlop, I live at 26100 Dundee in Huntington Woods. And my one point that I'd like to make is it seems like people would like to just have a vote on it, if they could, about their city, because we're a square a mile, I think the city is wonderfully maintained, city services. I think we're all very pleased with city services. And I feel that when I go around the different neighborhoods and see the improvements that people have made on their homes, it's only to enhance the quality of that home to begin with. And I just feel that maybe some of the alarm, maybe some of the anxiety with some of the residents might be, could it just be put up to a vote, to all the citizens in Huntington Woods, to vote whether they want to have studies done, whether they want to decide on having a historic district? I think that's the question in a lot of people's minds, and I couldn't be wrong.
Okay, thank you, I think you're agreeing with that gentleman just before you. Okay, this is the last one, right here. Just over your shoulder.
Martha Schrod, 10024 Elgin, lived here for nearly 56 years, moved in as a glint in my mother's eye in 1959. I just want to say that I think I'm one that's for the historic district, the two that have been developed, I'm for the study. And sure, I think it's great if we have a vote. Can somebody tell me how much it costs to run a vote versus volunteers on a study committee to get all the information first so that we have something to vote on? Anybody know how much it costs to run a vote?
What do you think it costs?
It's very expensive.
It is very expensive.
Depends on the type of election, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
Whether it's one issue or many issues.
So if we're going to have a vote, wouldn't it be prudent that we have something to vote on, which is information? And information is not going to hurt anybody. So for all of you who are frightened that you're going to get your rights taken away, by the way, we are not the color Nazis, we're not going to tell you, you can't paint your house pink, like they used to say back in the first go-around. Please, give us a chance, give us an opportunity- Please, give us a chance. Give us an opportunity to dig up the information. And for you and your book, something wonderful has happened since that book was published. It's called the Internet. And we were able to find all kinds of wonderful history beyond what's in there. So, give us a chance, okay?
Okay, I think, I think that's, I think I'm on a calling. And we've, we've gone on and on and on and on and on, and all the points have been made. Something brand spanking new?
Yes, it won't be very new. My name is Susannah. I'll talk to the speaker up here.
First name, last name?
Susannah Grubino, 10745 LaSalle. I'm from Europe. I was born there, brought up there. And there is a little bit of more history there. I would not develop too much sentiment over what is here, but I'm not here to disrespect that. If I am going to change my door, I'm not going to study the material. I will change the door.
Yeah.
She's talking to you.
Yeah, yeah, your thought right there. You're addressing it.
I said I will, I'm not interested in to study the material of the door. I want to change my door. So, the question, let's, let's be practical here. If I want to change my windows, do I need to get permission if I will be in historic district? Yes or no? Okay, I don't want to go through that.
Why?
Why yes. Somebody will decide that I need to stay with a certain style. I don't know that I want my style.
Okay, what about, what about how it looks in relation to your neighbors, everything like that? Does that matter?
I have not seen, as I walk through the city, I have not seen one house which appears to be older than 50 years to me. And everything is nicely renovated, and I think that's why people move here. They move here because of the school.
No.
They move here because of what they can do. It's very simple. You ask for studies, you show me the study. Why is it beneficial for me to be in the historic district?
There are plenty of studies out there that talk about the val, it goes to the value of homes. That's what it goes to.
Okay, now, now we're repeating again.
Right.
Come on.
We're repeating, correct. So, my point is, I do not wish to go through any evaluation by a third party, whether my window will look this way or that way, whether I need to have this color or that material of the door. I want to choose my door.
Okay.
That's my point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, I think it was the point where we should move on. I don't, I don't think that, to me, the discussion is not over. What's that? This was a discussion, continued discussion, support, uh, creating a historic district study committee. What's the pleasure of the commission?
I, for one, would still like to proceed, as I had said at the beginning of this discussion, with administration holding a town hall meeting to discuss the possible study of, of enlarging the historic district area.
Is that a motion? If that's a motion?
Yes, I'll make, I'll make it as a motion.
And I'm going to support that.
I would, I would, as part of that motion, like, for each and every home that is directly affected by this, so each home in the area needs to, I think, should receive an invitation to the town hall meeting. And we should publicize it everywhere. The entire community is invited. But I, beyond our normal ways of publicizing that, I would like to see an invitation sent to every home that is impacted.
And I amend that to say every home in the city of Huntington Woods?
Be invited?
Be invited.
No, I, I think that.
We will, we will publicize the way we publicize.
It'll be publicized in a new letter. It'll be publicized via the Internet, via our website.
I mean, the, there's a practical reason we can't fit 2,400 people in a room.
We're just inviting. We're not, we're not saying there are.
The rec center.
Definitely, we'll make it for the rec center.
Well, that's a motion. I support it.
Okay, is there any other discussion, questions?
So, we voted not to amend it, to invite everybody? Not, everybody's not going to come. I want to make sure everybody know, it gets the same.
Everybody's going to get notice.
I want every, I want to make sure everybody gets the same notice, irregardless of whether they're in or out of the district.
Yes.
I think it's, it could be a flyer that goes out, however we want it. We, we send mailings out all the time.
We could just, we could just post it like a meeting.
That's fine. Just a town hall. That's fine.
In, in the same way.
Put it in the water bill.
Tuck it in the water bill.
We've done things like that.
You want me to amend my motion not to send out a letter to the people in the area?
No.
I mean, that's what I'm hearing.
I just wanted to expand it to everybody.
There's just way too much conversation going on.
This is hard to track here. I would support a motion, as, as Commissioner Paul has made it, that if you have an affective area, if this is ever saying, this would be the proposed new historic district, that those individual homes be specifically sent a letter telling them that there will be this town hall meeting, and so, and the details and the reasons and so forth, and who's going to be there, and what's going to be discussed. Similar to what the zoo did quite effectively, I believe, a few weeks ago to deal with that noise ordinance. Quite effective, I thought. And then, as Amy indicates, you can use the website, you can use the e-blast and everything to say, we're having a town hall meeting. Great, it's a public event. I'm sure it'll be well-attended.
That is my motion.
Ah, excellent.
Any, any other comments?
I already noted mine.
No. Okay. All right, you ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pounced? Okay, your motion has passed. We will proceed. It won't be done quickly because it's going to take a while to be sure to do it right. We've got to be do it, do it done well, and, and we'll do it as soon as, as it makes sense to do it. And I can't, I can't give you a date right now. Okay. Let's go on to the next item. This is the Community Fund Board. The question is, what, what should the future of the Community Fund Board be?
Mr., Mr., you want me to take it? All right. Mr. Mayor, with respect to the Community Fund Board, the purpose of the Community Fund.
Folks, if you're going to converse, would you please do it outside? Thank you.
Purpose of the Community Fund Board, as I understand it, was a number of years ago, our former and much-beloved city manager, Alex Alley, had an idea to try to create an endowment setup for the city to try to attract funds to be used for community purposes. This, this fund exists today, as I understand it, there's about $20,000 or $21,000 in this fund, and it really isn't being used for anything at this point in time. It's just sort of sitting there, as I understand it. I've spoken to individuals who have served on the Community Fund Board, and it, it may in fact be that the purpose of the Community Fund Board doesn't exist in Huntington Woods, and it may very well be that the fund, the Community Fund Board should be dissolved. We have some vacancies on the Community Fund Board at the present time. I have solicited Teresa Fraley and Mr. Ken Katz to serve and fill two of the vacancies. And what I would like to do is make a motion that at the April meeting that we, we also, because we're going to have to interview Ken and Teresa there, but that we post that we're interested in people who want, if anyone wants to serve on the Community Fund Board, to we, whether we can fill the requisite number of seats or not, that we advertise it at the April meeting. We interview who's there. We appoint them. And then, I would suggest that we give them a charge, and the charge is in 90 days, or whether it's 180 days, I don't care. You give us, the city commissioner, a report and tell us, yea or nay. Yea, there's a reason for this to exist, and a purpose, and so forth. Or nay, there's really no reason for it to exist, and let's put that money to use in the city in some other fashion. But I do think before we sent, because my preference would be tonight, if I could do it, I, based on everything I've heard, I'd move to dissolve it and put the $21,000 in the, with the Recreation Department to use for the parks and things like that. There are other uses it could go to. But I think to give it a fair hearing and a fair airing, let's fill the vacancies with the people that we can get, including, like I said, Ms. Fraley, who is an accomplished, very accomplished fundraising person, and Mr. Katz, who's a longtime resident of the city, and anyone else who wants to join in, and then let's find out whether or not there's any purpose in it. So, that is my, that, that is the way I, what I, the way I view what we need to do with that.
So, your motion is to, to keep the committee going with the purpose with one, one point in mind, and that is to determine, should we maintain it or not?
Is there a reason for it to exist, and make a report to the city commission and to the residents of the city, and then we can deal with it down the line. But at the April meeting, I'd like to appoint these people and tell them, this is what we'd like you to do for us, and, and then get a report down the line. And then, like I said, if there's no reason for it to exist, then it's, then its time has come and gone.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
My name is Herrmann.
Yes.
Sheldon Collins.
Yes, Sheldon.
004 Nadine in Huntington Woods. I am a current member of the board of the commission. And the, as well as the planning commission, as a matter of fact. But I won't revisit those issues.
Thank you.
Because it's already past my bedtime. Thank you.
Long past my.
Thank you, Jeff. It's past my bedtime. Anyway, I, I was freshly on the board last year. Basically, what we did is plan the goodbye party for Alex.
Right.
And then we vanished into the distance. I sent out a couple of emails to the other members inquiring as to whether we might, when and whether we might meet, and what the agenda was. And I went to the, the city website. There is a, there's a charge there. Sheldon Development Maintain List of Community Needs Not Funded by the Annual Budget, Including Development of Gift Booklets. Maintain a system of collection funds and for acquisition and maintenance of public amenities. And assist the city in providing receipts and appropriate public recognition for contributions. Essentially, I mean, I was a freshman on the board. I had no idea how it functioned or exactly what it was supposed to do. And I don't know if there's anybody on the board who's got any of that institutional memory that can be able to apply to that at this point. And I'm certainly not volunteering to head the thing or anything like that. But, but the question is whether or not there is in fact a purpose to it, as you, as you well-stated, Jules. And I don't know what it is. I think it might be repurposed if, if there was a, somebody who had a plan for it, but I don't know anybody who has a plan for it. I hate to see the, the money just sitting there doing nothing when there are probably enough projects that need, some of which I've pointed out to Amy. Some of which she may have not shared with you. And I certainly hope that your comments about our beloved, like, pardon me, erstwhile.
Don't be, I'll be careful.
Right, erstwhile.
No, he has very, it was a great idea. It's just, what's, why are we here?
I'm, I'm hoping that you're not drawing any particular distinctions from, from Amy in terms of the dedication we have in terms of the city.
No, 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 no.
Nobody would take it that way, would they?
Well, if, only you, Sheldon.
Okay, the answer is, the only thing I can see, I mean, it's, it's an adequate purpose. It seems to be well-stated here.
But do you agree with the idea of filling the board, putting some people on it, assessing it? Okay.
Whether the, the number of boards and commissions needs to be updated or not, I'm not sure if it's current or if it's not. This has, has an update date of June 2009. In general, I, I see nothing wrong with it. There's plenty of commissions, as you can see by the list that's on the committee, that, that are allowed to make suggestions to the Huntington Woods Commission. I don't think you've left any one of them off, and there's got to be 15 of them here. I don't know that there is added value to the Huntington Woods Community Fund. I don't know if it is a result of having access to monies that are not otherwise available in terms of community fund contributions available on, I don't know if there's a, there's a tax deduction available to it on the, on the state form or not. Maybe there's, that's an avenue for that that we neglected, or that might be a source of additional funds. But I can't believe that in these tight budget times, there isn't room for using 20 grand to do something in some department somewhere, whether or not the community fund is the best mechanism for doing that. I, I, I've got nothing to add to that.
Well, I get, just in follow-up, you said everything your colleague said, and with all your experience in the city, and for the record, few residents of Huntington Woods have contributed as much to the city as Sheldon and different boards and commissions. And I'm not criticizing it. I'm just saying, you know, that obviously, in, on the 28th, you're going to see the fundraising prowess of the Huntington Woods Men's Club on full display. And a very substantial sum of money is going to be raised that will go to a good purpose in the city. And then the next question is, how many things will people give money to for the city? And do, are we operating something that, I'm only asking a question. I'm saying, based on what I've heard, if I could do it right now, I'd vote to eliminate it and use the money. But others, I know Commissioner Jakes may feel otherwise. So, let's give it a few months, run it out, see what you and your colleagues have to say. And then you can come and either say, no, we've got good purposes. We should do this X, Y, or Z. Or nope, it's time to turn out the lights.
Sheldon, do you have a wish list, or you have to develop it?
Essentially, as I read the purpose of the board, it's to gather those from other city departments, including members of the commission, and say, here, we have this need.
With dollars to it, which can be both published. There may be some of us interested in kids.
Yes.
And if there's a need for an expensive item that's in the rec center relating to kids, there are other people that may want to do scholarships as it relates to youth programming. We have a consistently outstanding youth organization. The library has needs.
Jeff, let me suggest, Jeff, let me suggest.
Let's solve the problem right now. We're going to ask them to study.
As I commented, I think, in my, in my note to Amy, this community responds very well to focused fundraising. That's why the, why, in my view, the, the men's club is successful. We're raising money for X. Or if you're raising money for the, like, put, like, the plaza in front of the rec center.
Something specific.
Or for the, the, the playscape, or the pool, or something like that, the city responds very favorably to that. The problem with, in my view, the community fund is that it's not focused. If this is for the general good of the community, and there's nothing wrong with that. But I don't think it's attractive enough, and I don't think there's half a dozen people in this, you know, other than perhaps the people on this commission, and, and including the people who've been named to the Community Fund Board, who actually know that the thing exists. And I'm thinking, I'm suggesting it's just too amorphous and doesn't focus itself well enough. Maybe there's some way to join, venture it with the men's club, or, or the rec center, or something like that, and, and get some input to some of those projects, if that's acceptable to those other organizations. I certainly don't want to encroach on something that somebody has adopted and considers it their baby. But other than that, I, I'm not sure that there is added value to the fund.
If the committee is well-represented and studying, they can answer those questions, I think.
Thank you.
That's the objective for the, for the committee to do. So, motion's been made and seconded that we fill out the committee and ask it to give that in its chief.
Analysis.
Analysis, yes. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pounced? Motion carried. Thank you. Now, we have the BART Board, the Public Art, Beautification, and Tree Advisor Matter Discussion, reducing the board from 11 members to nine members.
We've just been having difficulty recruiting residents to serve on boards and commissions. With, if you make it nine, make it 11, and if we don't have 11, then Claire is constantly trying to fill those spots. And this way, you know, you're just as effective with nine, and she doesn't have to spend time recruiting.
This is a relatively large board because we combined two boards, and when we did that, we kept everybody?
Actually, we combined two boards. It added another component, so we guesstimated how many people we needed. I actually now have probably 10 people interested. I actually have more than that interested. I probably have a board of about 11, who, several of whom are on other boards but are still working with BART. I probably could fill it, but I think nine is sufficient as an official number. That's primarily where I'm coming from.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move to reduce the BART Board from its current 11 members to nine members.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. We'll inform Commissioner Olson when he returns.
I will. This next item is just a housekeeping item. The public safety officers would like to switch from the POAM union to be represented by POLC, because the contract that we have in place is with POAM, this would just be a formal recognition that POLC will be replacing that union and representing the public safety officers going forward.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Oh, we have reports in minutes, parks and rec, library, environmental, and treasures report. Any comments, questions about any of those?
Question on the library advisory board. State aid last year was 2,500. I did not see it listed for this year. Is that just a delay in payment, or have we lost another funding source from the state? 2,500 was last year's state aid. For this year, there wasn't any shown. Is this just a timing issue?
Always a timing issue.
Okay.
The timing issue as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Here not the reports are received and filed. Next item is warrant number 295.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve warrant 295, subject to full audit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, you've had the report in front of you, you've had the time to look at it. Any questions or comments, anybody wishes to make? Okay, hearing done. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried, thank you. The now, public participation, another chance to speak about something that hasn't been discussed in length already tonight. Yes?
I'm Linda Solomon. I live at 8246 Huntington, and I wanted to talk about the zoo, because we're discussing the charm of Huntington Woods and all, and I think that the zoo border is very unique and charming to, I've lived by the camels, and I've lived by the tigers, and it's very special to a lot of people to see and, and hear the animals, and I know visitors to the area are wowed by this, and I see people all the time stopping to peer through the fence. And Huntington Woods is also one of our main pedestrian streets. It's really busy with joggers, bikers, walkers, special events, and I think we need to focus on making this street as attractive as possible. And the truth is, the zoo is changing, and I find it really hard to believe that they are taking our neighborhood into consideration. We have an awful tarp along the zoo, along the fence, but when you're inside the zoo, they have a beautiful natural border of evergreens, and I brought pictures, so that you can see what I'm talking about, because it's really a striking difference. And you can pass this around. This is the tarp that flaps in the wind, that's today, and this is the, the natural border that they have for themselves. Okay, so, back to talking about how they're really not taking us into consideration, the new penguinarium is right up against the fence, and I'm sure that there will be noise 24/7 from refrigeration, is that neighborly? At a meeting here in January, zoo officials presented a drawing of future plans, and there was a multi-story parking deck that was situated in the northeast corner adjacent to Huntington Road, and later, when I asked the zoo officials about it, they, they said it was now a surface lot. Another politician told me that it was only parking for a hundred. The truth is, we really don't know what their plans entail. Also, the zoo has plans for a tram running along Huntington Road. Does that mean that they're going to be cutting down all the trees and bushes and have another road running alongside a road? That is not going to be very pretty. So, the February meeting at the zoo, I thought was very interesting, and reinforced the concept that we are not partners with the zoo. There's no, there was no mention in their video about anything controversial, the planned tram, the parking deck, nothing was mentioned. So, I think it's very important that we take this opportunity to protect our border. We are working very hard to maintain the charm of our neighborhood, and the zoo border is almost a half mile long, and its impact is going to be big, possibly even affecting property values and taxes. So, please listen to the residents and make this a priority before it's too late.
Thank you.
I'd honest to be very griefing, I haven't talked to you in a long time. I wanted to let the community know yard waste does not start until the 7th of April. Please take your bags in, because there are many that are out, or you can take them up to Socrum at no cost, and they will take them up there. Also, I do have a small container for vegetable and fruit, fresh vegetable and fruit scraps, if you want one. We now have one, DPW.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other? Yes?
If I might, Sheldon Cullen again. I haven't moved. Let me say, as a member, I spent six years on the planning commission, six years on the zoning board, and this is my second tour on the planning commission. We deal every month with balancing the intrusion of city regulation on private property and the ability of people to do what they want with their homes and make the designs that they want. The, the repeated complaints, which I, I'm not sure if they're fact-based or not, frankly, to go back to your point, Jules, about cheaper materials and cheap housing and building for as little as you can and, and selling for as much as you can, if, whether it's a developer or a homeowner, if they choose to make a project that comes under the umbrella of the planning commission, if they meet the relative standards that are in the ordinances and the guidelines that we apply, they're entitled to build their house. Whether it's in historic district, well, we don't have any jurisdiction over historic district, okay? And we work very hard and are very careful about that. I don't think, in my view, it's good policy to make a distinction between people who are going to live in the house and people who are flipping or turning or, or demoing a house and putting up something else. I don't think that's good for the city, but I don't make those policy decisions. If you want to apply different standards to people who are staying in their home as opposed to people who are, to developers, if that's what you want to call them, I'm not sure where all the definitions lie, then I think it falls at the feet of the city commission to set different standards. If you want different materials, tell us what's the materials you want. We'll enforce the ordinance as best we can, based upon what's put in front of us. I think it is, whether it's good policy or not, I'll, I'll leave for comment when those things come before the planning commission, because most of those kinds of things do come before the planning commission for vetting before they hit you and for study. But, you know, it's, if you want to attack demo permits, then attack demo permits, the city is, in, in my view, establishing a pattern of being reactive. It happened, the first historic district happened when somebody wanted to do something with the large home, the old house on Boardman, that consisted of, I think, a carriage house and a main house. That's, that's what generated, by my recollection, I've been here 38 years, the first historic district. We now have a single home demo on Pembroke that seems to get everybody all excited about it, okay?
Do you remember what they wanted to do with the house on Boardman? They wanted to tear that down and build three cookie cutter houses in a row. Remember that?
Jules, okay, all right? Then you deal with that. It seems to me that one avenue, and the city, one that the city chose, is to deal it with it, deal with it as a historic district. There are other mechanisms to use, I think, that are valid, and I think that the planning commission, if, if I sound a little defensive, I don't mean to, but I think the planning commission.
Feeling guilty.
Tries, no. The planning commission tries very hard to apply the standards that have been given to us. If you want different standards, pass different standards. Don't sit here and kvetch about the fact that houses are being built that meet, in fact, the ordinances and the standards that are in front of us.
The one thing you don't want to forget is that the planning commission is the advisory board of this commission. That's where the standards are developed. We approve them. We approve whatever the, whatever the, the planning department, the planning commission says, this is the way it ought to be. I don't think, we didn't generate the, the, so, so, that, you know, the current, turns around and comes back toward the planning commission. If there's a problem, they should be addressing it.
It's not a one-way communication by any stretch of the imagination. If the commission expresses an interest that it wants to make different choices about choices of materials or different standards about people who are residents as opposed to people who are developers, however you define those things, we'll be happy to work on it for you. But it isn't just one-way communications. Obviously, we are, we are more hands-on on a regular basis than the city commission might be, and maybe we might be more aware of some of regular problems. I think that, that we're not shy about doing that. In any case, I think the, the, the planning commission is a, is a very hefty control mechanism, and I would endorse the fact that we have the toughest standards and we apply them the toughest way of anybody in Oakland County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comler, Huntington Woods Dundee. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and all the commissioners. It's been a long evening. I understand you're volunteering your time, and appreciate that. I go to a lot of different kinds of meetings that are public meetings. There's public participation. Normally, in all those meetings, everybody gets, that wants the opportunity, does get to participate within some parameters, usually a three to five minute timeframe. And again, I appreciate your ability to generate a little extra time for somebody to get something off their chest. Most of those meetings, the, the people that are sitting on the board are active listeners. They don't get into active debates with people making comments at the time, mainly to prevent the kind of discord that I saw tonight, and I was uncomfortable with. I think when somebody gets up here to the microphone, you listen to them, you have an opportunity, because you're sitting up here, as Commissioner Jenks did, and respond almost with an unlimited amount of time. So, give the people that have come up here at least the opportunity to speak and sit down and listen to what you have to say. I appreciate your time, again, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, hearing done, we'll go to city manager's report.
Yes, I was going to tell you about all the upcoming meetings that are coming up, but there's a lot, and it's late, so may I just suggest that residents go to our website, sign up for our e-newsletter. We put all the agendas in there, the upcoming meetings, so that you can mark them out ahead of time, and then you could be well informed about what's going on in the city. Website is www.hwmi.org, and look for the link that says, sign up for the newsletter. That's it.
Okay, good, okay. Now, commissioners' remarks, I'll start with Mayor Protemo.
Okay.
First of all, I want to thank you for running the meeting for me a, a month ago, when I was down south trying to get warm. You were getting warm here, I understand, okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think that, I, I want to take the time to thank Linda Solomon, because I think, if anything, our number one priority, even over historic district, if I may say so, would be the border to Huntington and the zoo. And the reason I say that is because I took time out, and I think most of the commissioners met with the board, the important people at the zoo, as did Amy, and we had a, we had, I had a dialogue with them. I was in there for two hours. When they came to us, some things changed, one of which was the tram. The, the process of what the tram was supposed to be used for had changed, and the tram now was a, a part of the train, which they told me the tram was only to be used for food supplies in emergencies, employee vehicles. So, things have changed, and I really think that all the years that I've lived there, Huntington is that loop you walk around, and when you see the camels, when you see, and we were asking them for, to restore the walkable entrance, and I think that we really need to have this utmost importance about what is happening, because mostly, when things are done, and I don't know if they have domain to do whatever they wish with, with their property, but we always notify people within 300 feet of anything that we're going to, to do. Right now, they are against the ordinance because they have two fences up. They have that green hideous thing where they want, you know, and then they, we have a fence, so that's against our two-fence ordinance right now. So, that should be taken off right away, and someone brought that up at the meeting, and I think that should be addressed, because people like to look at the zoo. And, correct, and we even had someone who we interviewed today for the BART Board who wants to bring back the, the flowers and, and all the beautiful, that at one time existed, flowers and landscape along that when you walked. So, I think that, you're right, I think that to me is, is, I, I'm very important about that. I think that we really need to ask our city manager and our, our legal experts to make that a priority. The second thing is that we have 17 nurses so far that I know in Huntington Woods who are Huntington Woods nurses, and they do various deeds for different communities and cities. We are in the process of developing the Huntington Woods nursing community, and I'm hoping to expand it to other communities to get this idea of mentoring, educating, and maybe even assisting with, with people who need help in the community. So, we are in the process of writing up the bylaws, and any nurses that are willing to start out on the committee, please call me. Our first meeting will be within the next two weeks, and I will actually post it, maybe that Amy could post it up there, if it's not an official Huntington Woods group, before we get the bylaws and that. So, anybody out there who's interested, you don't have to be a nurse. If you want to be a nurse, you're, we don't, we're not excluding anybody. If you want to learn about the profession, assistant profession, or do anything about it, we are, we're there to help mentor, maybe to get some grants, to run some studies on 696 and, and Woodward emission testings and things like that about the environment, and make sure that maybe we could look, there's just a few things, you know, look at the cancer rate, there's a few things that have come up that people have asked me about. So, do some researching, so it would span. I think it would be really an addition to the community and a minimal amount of time and effort. So, and I think we have about, someone said maybe over 30 nurses within the city of Huntington Woods. So, please come on out, volunteer, and be on this new forming committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just have a couple of items. First, I want to address the issue of interaction with residents when they come in to speak here. I, in the world that I live in and work in, I have learned from my friends who are judges that they oftentimes learn more about the case, asking questions, than they do reading briefs and having discussions among themselves. And when I ask questions of people when they come in here, it's because I'm interested in hearing what they have to say, I'm interested in their opinions, and I want to know what the basis of the opinions are. That is certainly not, I found in the six years I've been here, that most people like the give and take, they like the dialogue, as long as it's respectful, and I think it is. There's nothing wrong with asking people, what's the basis for that? I mean, you know, the old expression, everyone has an opinion. Great, I just want to know, do you have any facts to back it up? There's no, nothing wrong with asking that question, and people, I think, learn from, it's, it's, we've heard that word dialogue tonight over and over and over. To me, that's dialogue, asking a question, getting an answer. It's not intended to be disrespectful, it's intended to promote a better quality. It's intended to promote a better quality of discussion, if you will. With respect to the historic commission and the historic issues, since the last meeting, I've had an opportunity, Commissioner Jenks had the Michigan Municipal League pull some articles and literature for us. And there is a lot of literature out there. It's very useful, very informative, and it's frankly contrary to a lot of the opinions that have been spoken here, addressed here. Now, whether it's right or wrong, I don't know. But these are studies that have been done of a variety of communities, not just in Michigan, but on the United States, Texas, other states, as Commissioner Jenks noted. So, I think at the town hall meeting that Bob proposed, I'm hopeful that we'll have a proponent of that literature and a proponent of that aspect who can use data to support why it's a good thing and what the benefits of it are. I mean, I've lived in the historic district since it was created. I don't see the downside. We had to have our windows done. My wife wanted one kind of window and they said, "You can't have that. You have to put back what's there." Great, looks great. So, I personally don't see a big issue with that. But I understand personal issues and there's nothing wrong with that. On the zoo, I thought the zoo forum, I personally thought it was useful. I agree with Ms. Solomon that especially one of my main issues is blight, as she knows. So, I'm very interested in the commentary about the way the zoo is maintaining the exterior along Huntington. And I think now's a good time to work with them, to get them to do more to improve the aesthetics of that. I could not agree with you more about that. There's no excuse for anything along that strip looking shabby on the side of the zoo, especially based on how busy the zoo is and everything they've got going there. So, I am of the belief that our city manager will be able to approach them and say there's legitimate concern about how the zoo looks on Huntington and they want it fixed. And we don't want it looking, we don't want to be facing the bad side here. We want that, we want our side to look as good as your side. I couldn't agree with you more on that. We had a lot of discussion about the noise ordinance. I want to commend Professor Reddish for all the work that he's done. I had a long conversation with him the other day. And Ms. Rosati is working on a, on a new noise ordinance to deal, in many respects, with the issues that have been raised with that. I just urge people to remember, these noise ordinances are thorny, if you will. They deal with noise, speech, pre-speech, First Amendment. Be very careful when you're passing regulations that deal with those issues because there's no point in passing an ordinance that the zoo can simply thumb its nose at because they think it's unconstitutional and never stand up in court. So, we're working with the city of Royal Oak in tandem to come up with an enforceable ordinance that will address the concerns of our residents, which are very valid. The noise ordinance, the noise issues are, as expressed, are very valid, no question. I'll see everybody at the Men's Club Auctions so we can all make our charitable contributions to the community. And other than that, before we get to the next meeting, we've got Passover in Easter and I wish y'all a pleasant holiday and celebration.
Thank you. Mr. Paul?
I'm just going to keep my comments very brief since it's the first night of the NCAA tournament and it falls on St. Patrick's Day. Go Greens.
Excellent.
That's the kind of commenting. Okay.
Normally, I would speak longer, but I spoke longer before. I had the opportunity to meet with DTE in regard to energy outages that have been occurring in the city. I asked a question about four months ago. We got a response. I had the ability to meet with the, with the city manager as well. They will be taking and trying to redo the transformers and a lot of tree trimming on the west side of the city as it relates to what they call the Oak Park Transformer, as well as on the northern side, the Berkeley Transformer. That's one of their projects. The other thing is, they will be redoing and trimming in the area, which I think they call 34, which seems to sort of come in where the historic district is up on the hill. One of the complaints that I had was, a lot of times they'll trim a tree, but they trim it to the line and they do a hatchet job not only this way, but this way. And then they just leave the logs at the bottom. They've now agreed that if you request from them, they will take that tree down to the ground. And if you request further, they will remove the root. So, it doesn't deal with the ugliness of how wide they can go, but it does mean that if they take a tree down partially, and you go a lot of times to, to another tree company, they won't touch it because of the risk of the liability. We will get rid of some of that. I've suggested to the zoo that instead of putting a parking deck, if they do, and we get mixed messages whether that's true or not, that they put it on the south end near the parking lot with the rationale, if they were to go up two or three stories, a quarter of a mile away, first of all, is not going to destroy your view of the expressway. And then the second part would be that possibly by having anything that would stop some of the noise. I mean, when Dr. Reddish called me and talked to me for an hour, I got in the car and I drove down along Huntington during the Christmas music time at the zoo. And the largest noise that I heard was coming from the expressway a quarter of a mile to a third of a mile away. And that might be something that would be accommodating there. Something that's going to be coming up probably the first week in April, and I'm hoping that we can respond to it, is the FCC has published a notice which takes effect April 8th, which says that communications organizations can co-locate their additional transmitters that they now need wherever they have something going. So, I never understood what it was until I got a presentation. I drive down Lincoln, I see a box hanging on a pole. It's got a green light or a blue light. Well, that's a transmitter. They can put three or four or more of those and hang them there so they become a monster. When they put the boxes on the poles, I argued against one as low as they are because they're visually crap. And the only reason we got it not going to the ground, which they wanted, was our argument was there would be snow underneath it and we had to clear the snow. You need to start watching that. If you see anyone out on a pole, there is something going on federally and it's occurring at the state. If you are worried about us in the historic district, there is something called preemption. What preemption is, is a, at the state level, they could say, "We're going to put 16 historic districts in Huntington Woods." And you'd end up with no kind of appeal procedure. That's what they have basically done with this co-location. They've given us a 60-day window, which is much shorter than it used to be. If we do not respond in 60 days, it's assumed that it can go in.
And if we respond and say no, it goes in?
Yeah, I mean, you have very limited choices. You need to be watching what's being put on in Lansing. And you need to watch those discussions because we're going to get a lot of stuff which is inappropriate for Huntington Woods, where it's going to be preempted by the legislature. Happy holidays for the holidays that are coming up as people move to the streets to run, even if there is no snow. Encourage them to go to public safety and at least get the reflective straps and tapes so that they can be seen. Whether they're allowed to run in the street or not, and especially on Huntington, it seems that a lot of the runners try and run you down in the middle of the night. And it's not a win-win situation. We are lucky that we've had no deaths. Thank you.
Is everybody else ready to go home? I think I've had, I've had about all I need tonight. So, I won't say much, except I hope you would all make it a point to attend the biggest fundraiser the city has, and that's the Men's Club Service Auction. That's very important. And I, I think that we've gotten a lot of stuff to think about and to work. Thank you.